All right, good evening. Welcome to this evening, Monday, September 23rd, excuse me, 25th, 2017, school board meeting. We have on our agenda this evening, the call to order, approval of the agenda, open forum, the superintendent's report. We have discussion items consisting of the athletic activities update, referendum update, world's best workforce report, preliminary levy update, policy development first readings on policies 402 relating disability and non-discrimination, 413 harassment and violence, and 419 tobacco-free environment. Those are our first readings. Then we have our second reading, which is policy 514 bullying prohibition and 526 hazing prohibition for second readings. And then we have a discussion about setting school board listening session dates. And we have our consent agenda. And on our action agenda, we will have the approval of the preliminary levy and approval of the second reading of policies 514 bullying prohibition and 526 hazing prohibition. And we'll have communications and transmittals and adjournment. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda? Moved by Bruce.
Second.
Seconded by Karen. Any comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That passes 5-0. Okay. First item is open forum. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the school board? Okay, see none. We will move on to the superintendent's report. Superintendent O'Sai.
Good evening Chair Yarosh and members of the board. For the purpose of the superintendent's report to this evening, I would like to highlight some events connected to homecoming. This year, homecoming was scheduled for the second week of the school year, and our students and staff did an outstanding job creating engaging events and activities. The events of the week at the high school included a powder puff football game, badminton ping pong tournament, coordination and banquet, movie on the field, and homecoming parade and dance. Having homecoming so early this year and with the unseasonably warm weather, there was a pretty good turnout at all of the events connected to homecoming. It was fun to see students and staff members of all ages take part in the activities and celebrate the rich tradition and culture that makes St. Louis Park Public Schools and the high schools so special. I referenced the unseasonably warm weather at, for the start of the school year, and while the warm weather contributed to helping making a great homecoming week, it also created some warm conditions in our schools without air conditioning. I received a couple of communications from staff concerned about the temperature in their classrooms and the impact that it will have on their students' ability to learn. Our facilities team worked extremely hard to find creative ways to adjust ventilation and airflow to keep classrooms as cool as possible. The unseasonably warm weather for the start of school year was just another reminder of the need for the facilities improvements that we are asking for in the bond referendum. Having air conditioning at all of our schools will help us prevent classrooms from being 106 degrees as you see in this picture here. We will be hosting three public meetings about the referendum in October. Those dates are listed on the screen, October 2nd, 7:00 PM at the middle school. October 10th will be a Twitter town hall starting at 6:00 PM. And you see there our school district Twitter handle and my Twitter handle. And then on Wednesday, October 25th, at 7:00 PM in the high school cafeteria. And this concludes my superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you. All right. First discussion item is the athletic activities update. Our director of athletics, Andy Ewell, will present.
Thank you for having me here tonight. So each year, you've had me come in the fall and give a different report on goings-ons in the high school athletic program. So this year, I'm going to do it a little bit different than I have in the past. In the past, I've gotten up here and talked about participation numbers. I've talked about facilities. I've talked about what the makeup, the profile of our coaches have been. Tonight, I'm going to talk about the, this past year kind of in a glance, and 2016-17 really wasn't any different than any other past year, but I'm going to talk about our successes because I really feel like for us, it's one of the things we might not do as well of a job as we probably should. We do a great job talking about how wonderful we are for athletics, or I'm sorry, for academics. And I think when we're surrounded by the schools we're surrounded by in the West Metro, whether it be the bigger mega high schools, or whether it be the private schools that are around us, maybe what our teams, our kids, our coaches are accomplishing might kind of get brushed over. And I want to, I want to talk to some of those things and those successes. And again, I don't look at this past year as an abnormality, but more kind of the norm. So this past year, we had 379 fall participants, 260 in the winter, 371 in the spring, which is pretty much, it holds true for our past years. It's not up, it's not really down, so pretty normal. Our conference, we're part of the Metro West Conference. You can see up on the screen the size enrollments for the other high schools, and that we are the fifth largest school in our conference of eight.
Hey, Andy.
Yes.
So what do we think that's going to do going forward?
Let me see if I can go back on this. There you go, Joe.
So a bunch of those, I would imagine, are going to stay roughly equal. Is, are Chan, Hassan, and Chaska still growing, or are they pretty stable?
No, they're, they're growing. I think you see, I think Jefferson and Kennedy are probably slowly declining in enrollment. Richfield, the same thing. Robbinsdale Cooper slowly declining in enrollment. Benild wants to stay between 900 and 1,000 students. So I think in terms of where we kind of fit in with that, I think we'll, we'll probably continue if our growth happens as predicted, that I would say we'd be in the, you know, maybe 3-4 spot at some point. But Chan and Chaska are both still growing.
Good, thank you.
Yep. And again, if there's questions as, as they pop up, please just interrupt me and ask. So in terms of conference, conference finish, last year, we competed in 25 different sports in the Metro West Conference, and our overall finish, if you were to take all of those, add them up, divide them by 25, we had an average finish of 3.9. And for me, what that tells me is that we're with the right mix of schools, that if you're finishing consistently too high, it's probably not the right group of schools to be with. And if you're finishing consistently too low, it's not the right group of schools to be with. So from a competitive standpoint, where we're finishing, and again, this is pretty typical from the past couple of years being in the Metro West Conference, I think we're, we're doing well in what we should be doing. So postseason. So of our 12-team sports, eight of our 12 won at least one postseason contest. Seven of our 14 individual sports had athletes that advanced onto state. A total of 41 individual sport athletes competed at the state level representing our school. So not just looking at how we're doing conference-wise, but postseason-wise, when we're typically playing against the bigger schools in the West Metro, you can see that our team sports are having good success and our individual sports are having success as well. One of the other things I wanted to point out was just in this past year, we had over 10 coaches receive some sort of recognition, whether it be from their state body, or from section, or from the region. And again, it's just, I think, a nice indication of where our programs are at and what our coaches are doing with them. Then I'll get into our graduates. And again, I don't look at 2016-17 as being any different than any of the past years, more just wanting to celebrate the successes that we're having. So besides the, the conference success, besides the postseason success, besides the individuals moving on to state, besides having a handful of coaches that are getting recognized for their excellence, we had 23 kids that graduated last spring that are now playing college athletics. So you can see the list of, of the fall grads there. The winter grads. And then spring sports. And looking at the list of spring sports, I just want to point out one, one 2017 grad, Zach Nelson, is a pretty unique and interesting story, I think. He's a kid who, for his first three years at St. Louis Park, all he ever did and participated in from an athletic standpoint was soccer. It was soccer in the fall, it was probably winter soccer, it was spring soccer, it was soccer, soccer, soccer. And we really pride ourselves, I think, on, we want our kids and encourage them and hope that all our kids are doing, you know, multiple, multiple experiences, multiple athletics. So Zach got done with his senior year of soccer last fall. All the time he put into playing soccer didn't really materialize into anything for after high school. And so Zach decided to go out for track, just kind of on a whim, to do something different. So again, never any track training at all. He goes to the state meet, qualifies for the state meet, and Zach finished fourth in the 100 with no track experience or background, other than maybe a month and a half worth of practice. And I believe he finished sixth in the 200, which were remarkable times, remarkable, you know, accomplishment for him. He was set to go to Hamlin after that. Hamlin wanted him to come run at Hamlin. He was all set to go to Hamlin. He enjoyed track so much and felt so good and, you know, so rewarded from how track went for him, that he did some summer track events. Went down to Kansas for, I don't know if it was an AAU or USA Track and Field Event. What was it? USA Track and Field Event. And ran a fast enough time down there in the summer that the university in Minnesota asked him to come run track at the University of Minnesota. So here's a kid who had never run track before, you know, less than nine months ago, didn't know what he was going to do collegiately, and went from going out for track on a whim to doing extremely well at the state meet, to thinking he was going to Hamlin to run track, to ending up at the University of Minnesota running Division One Track and Field because he gave something an opportunity. So I just really wanted to focus and point out what he had accomplished because I think for so many of our kids that are hearing from outside sources, not from within this building, or our coaching staff, or the admin here, that, gosh, you need to specialize, specialize, specialize. The best thing that any of these kids can do is do multiple activities. And I think he's a great example, a great case of that. So like I started off saying, in the past, I've gotten up here and broken down participation numbers, talked about facilities. I really wanted to focus this year on saying, hey, this is what we accomplished last year. We did really, really good things. Our kids worked extremely hard, our coaches worked extremely hard, there's great community support. That yes, we're surrounded by the mega schools in the West Metro and the private schools that are around us, but we're doing quite well holding our own, and I think it's something everybody should be proud of in terms of what's been accomplished. And again, this is the norm, not just a, a one-year type of thing. So I'm here for other questions.
It's not really a question, it's more of a statement. And into, adding to Zach, great kid, works really, really hard to accomplish things. And, and then the track program to take him in, never running track before, take him in, work with him, get his starts down, and to, just, just to work really well with him. And then bring that over to our locally grown, you know, summer program that we have here in St. Louis Park, and worked with him more. And it was a great nod to the St. Louis Park programs that we have here, and, and the coaches, and Zach, more than, more than always good.
Yep. So I'll just finish up quickly that of, in, last year, we had 67 all-conference athletes in the Metro West Conference. We had 50 more kids that were recognized for honorable mention all-conference, and then 68 academic all-conference athletes. And then the interesting thing with the 68 academic all-conference is, they need to have a CUMGPA of 3.5, and it's only seniors that qualify for that. So we had 68 seniors that qualified as academic all-conference last year. Joe?
All right. So Andy, I had a couple of questions. One is, well, thank you for this, and then I do a couple of facilities questions. Trying to think, is it, I think this is the first year now with the stadium upgrades we've had. We had that grant with Hennepin County.
Yep.
At homecoming football game, I'm pleased to say I could, we could hear the speakers. They seem to be working well.
It's a work in progress figuring out what's the right level to have the speakers.
No, I understand that, but it was seemed, it was clear anyhow.
It's very clear.
Maybe too clear is what you're saying. All right. But what, what's the feedback? We have some permanent bathrooms, and again, this is something that we partnered with Hennepin County. We worked on it for several years. It took us a while to get our, our application in, but, you know, it was an opportunity. We took advantage of it to get, it actually comes from the twin stadium dollars, that part of the funding process was reserving annual monies for Hennepin County projects. And so we benefited from that. So if you could just speak to that a little bit. We also put in the permanent concession stand and so.
Of course. So I'll rewind it even back further than, than the last year. So this is the fifth year that we've had the synthetic turf out on the field. And when we, when I stood up here, however many years, six, seven years ago, when we were first talking about it, we talked about usage. And we were using the stadium field when it was grass, less than 60 hours a year total for the district. We needed to keep it that, that few usable hours because otherwise the field would get torn up. We're using it over 1,500 hours now between FIAD with PSI, high school FIAD, practices being out there, lower-level games of ours being out there, and then community use being out there. It was never open to the community before. I've had so many people, this year alone, be in amazement when they've come to our field, and they've asked me, how soon was it that we put that field in? And I'm like, we're on it for our fifth year. And they're absolutely amazed at the shape that it's in. So twofold with that. One, that we went with the product, that you all made the decision to go with the product that we went with because we went with a very good quality product. And the second part of it is Tom Bravo's staff that's out there and the maintenance and the time that they're putting into grooming it and keeping it in the best shape that it can be in, that it's, it's not much different now than it was when it was put in five years ago. So that's the first step with the facilities out there. The second step, like you mentioned, was when we partnered with Hennepin County, got the grant money, and we put in a real concession stand there, the permanent bathrooms, we did the sound system, we got rid of the press box that was somewhat shaky.
Literally and figuratively?
In every way possible. I've heard nothing but positives from everybody about it. And, and I can say that back when we were trying to figure out and navigate what was going to be the best use of the dollars, if that project came together, that I was super hesitant about the bathrooms. Because of the dollar amount that that ate up in the project, I couldn't imagine not having those out there now. From a aesthetic standpoint, to not have to have five, six, seven porta-potties out there for, and mostly for the use of the people that are out there at the stadium. It's just, it's, it's a better feel. The arc, having something for people to know, this is the main gate that they're walking in and that they're walking out of. And then you mentioned the sound system, even though we're still trying to play around and figure what's the right level to have the volume at, to have a clear sound system that you can hear the national anthem, you can hear the announcers. And the nice thing with it is, is there's zones on it, so we can really kind of spotlight where the sound and the noise is going to. It's just, it's been, it's been really nice for visiting teams to be in the press box and have a small section that's private for them, where everybody's not in there together. It's just been, it's, the whole project has been really nice, and I think it just, it's very welcoming to our community and to people that are from other communities coming here. And I just continue to hear positive praise about it.
Good, good to know. I want to move to the referendum a little bit. Two, two things there. You said one thing about our usage, our hours.
Yep.
One of the, what's the word I'm looking for? One of the items that we have to comply with is, is school usage, as I recall. Now, if we move, plan is move PSI out, are we still, will there be any issue getting enough gym hours and classroom usage time out on the field if PSI is not there anymore? Do you have a concern about that?
No, because I would think that high school FIAD would probably just gobble up the hours because I think right now, that between the FIAD staff at PSI and the FIAD staff at the high school, they've got to figure out how to, I don't think they're ever out there at the same time. So they're sharing it now. So I think the hours that PSI would be off of it, the FIAD would end up being on it, the high school FIAD.
Okay. So we're going to have to keep that in the back of your mind, make sure that's something we're going to have to comply with. And then the second item is, could you just talk a little bit about what a, a new weight room might mean? Not only do our athletes, but our other students and usage, and how that would further what we're trying to accomplish?
For sure. I mean, last year, and again, last year was a pretty typical year for us with our strength and conditioning program. We had close to or a little over 300 kids signed up and participating in strength and conditioning. Now, not all at the same time. There's heavier times than others. The fall, the, the winter's extremely heavy, the summer's extremely heavy. The fall and the spring, maybe not as much so because we have a lot of kids out for fall and spring athletics, as you saw on the slide earlier. We're just cram for space. There's, and I don't remember the, the numbers off the top of my head, but we're putting way too many kids and way too much equipment in such a small space that it's really not the best use of the space. We're having to take gym time away from volleyball in the fall, and then basketball in the winter, and then spring sports before they're able to get outside, which is always kind of a mystery when that happens because we have to take one of the courts of the activity center and use that for strength and conditioning to do their warm-up, their dynamic exercises, their movement type of things. So the trickle-down effect of having a space that's too small right now, not only is just the, the weight room space, the training space, it's the space to warm up properly, to cool down properly, to do proper testing of running with kids. For our athletic trainer to have a space where if a kid needs to do rehab, they can bring them in there and there's adequate space to do what they need to do with somebody for rehab. We just, right now, it's equipment on equipment and bodies on top of bodies in there. And it's just, it's, when, when you're serving, when you're serving 300 or more kids in a program, they deserve to have adequate space. It's, it's less about what's filling it and more about the size of the box.
All right, thanks.
I would also like to add to that. We, we're right now, right in the middle of our conference as far as performance. I believe that when we get that weight room and more kids are able to utilize it, I think they'll be able to utilize, they'll be able to realize their talents and their abilities to perform better on field during their sport and their activities. It just goes hand in hand.
Yep.
Weightlifting gets high performance.
Well, and, and Jim, back to one of the things you asked me when you first started that question. Right now, because of the space limitations that we have, we only allow students that are signed up for athletic programs to participate in that strength and conditioning program. We've had lots of kids say, gosh, can I use it basic? Basically, instead of having to go to LA Fitness or Lifetime, can I do the program you guys are doing? We just don't have the ability to, to provide that service to everybody right now because we have so many kids that are participating. And I look at what could be, what could happen if we were to have a, a bigger, more functional space. You could get FIAD classes in there, which can't happen now because when they're having FIAD classes of 40 to 50 kids in them, you can't put, you can't supervise that many kids in the weight room by yourself as one teacher, let alone physically fit them all in there. It, it could be available to the community after hours when we're done with it. There's just the, the options and what could happen with it, the potential is limitless.
And that might give us an opportunity then, so even more students could participate. They may not be in a sport, but that would be something. If there's a student here that they might have access to, it'd probably be a great thing.
And if that's a connection for them to the school, outside of the school day, that's a great thing.
All right. Anyone else? Think we hit it all? All right. Andy, thanks for your presentation. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. Next item is the referendum update. Sir's not here. Oh, okay. Tom Bravo, you're presenting. I understand. That's Andy. I guess, sorry.
I'm just the technology.
Yes. I needed something to ever do. So Superintendent O'Sai and school board, I want to kind of just go over another portion of the referendum, the bonding part of it. And when people go out there, they're asking a question, again, what's happening with the deferred maintenance thing? There's, they're very, very impressed and happy with what we're doing with portions of the project, but the deferred maintenance part, they want to know more details of it. So I'm just wanting to kind of go over a few slides and just kind of go, just kind of let you know what's going on. So that part? Okay. So we want to give you a background again. The facilities part of it and deferred maintenance came out of, of course, the strategic plan of, when it was 2015. And the mission statement, as a, as a caring, diverse community with a traditional of putting its children's first, we, we ensure all students attain their highest level of achievement, prepare, prepare all students to contribute to society, offer high-quality opportunities for lifelong learning, provide multiple pathways for, to excellence, challenge all learners to meet high standards, and the big one, of course, for me, is provide a safe and nurturing environment that energizes, enhances the spirit. So out of that came strategic four, which facilities is that we will always ensure our facilities are consistent with the needs of our learners and our community. So we really wanted to make sure that we fill this mission statement moving forward as, as we are doing. So the background for the need for bond referendum for the deferred maintenance part of it is, of course, the increase enrollment. Everybody knows that, they've talked about that a lot. But the agent of facilities, which, you know, that's why we're asking for more deferred maintenance money. Just this weekend alone, as, as the superintendent said, you know, we were getting multiple calls. Our server, IT server, was about to go down yesterday, and we had to figure out how we're going to take care of that. So in working with Tom Marbo and his team, we shut down a few systems, we brought in air conditioning, a portable air conditioner, and we got the, we got it from 88 degrees down to 75. This is a temporary thing, but these are things that we need to, as we get deferred maintenance money, we're going to take care of because we know those are aging pieces of equipment. I don't, I get at least on average about four calls, five calls a weekend on issues of the building. I try not to bother the superintendent too much, but I do want to let him know, and I, and Sandy too. I don't do it at 2:00 in the morning, I try to wait until 8:00 in the morning, but we do get calls. The need for flexible learning space to accommodate next century learning, that's coming out of deferred maintenance, believe it or not. Technology infrastructure, we just talked about that. We do need to have our infrastructure looked into and upgraded because of the fact that as we get more and more into high-tech equipment and things like that, we need to have our technology and infrastructure higher. And of course, schools as community centers for after-school, evening and weekend gathering spaces. That means, again, having the space ready for secure and safety and using the deferred maintenance money to take care of the things that, you know, above the ceiling, below the ground, floor, things like that will help us. So deferred maintenance, of course, we all get, everybody knows that we do have to submit a 10-year plan to the state, asking and telling them that this is what it's going to take each year. I know Sandy tries a hard job in, in that part of it. We don't always get everything that we want, but, you know, we're happy for what we get from the state. With the additional $5 million in a bonding referendum, we will continue working on what we need to work on. And believe me, the things that we are going to be working on, not only a deferred maintenance, but they're keeping within the sustainability, they're keeping it within what we've, what we'd agree to, the energy conservation. If you don't know, we were a final candidate for the B3 benchmark, that's energy conservation, and that's big. I didn't know how big it was until someone told me, but it was big. We were a final candidate. We didn't get it, but we're, we're happy that we're a final candidate for that type of thing. Other things that we're going to be doing, of course, roof repairs, always constant. You have to take care of the envelope of the building before you do anything else. Each HVAC plumbing upgrades. Again, these buildings are 50-plus years old, so we really need to take care of that. Our energy management system is a big thing that people really don't maybe understand is that those, that's kind of like the, the brains of what keeps the buildings cool, heated, things that we take for granted, that, you know, you have a thermostat on the wall and you think, okay, just hit Things that we take for granted, that, you know, you have a thermostat on the wall and you think, okay, just hit the thermostat, but it has a lot of controls to it. It has a lot of mechanisms to it. So, we're gonna be looking at that. Of course, classroom upgrades, electrical lighting replacement, this is where we're gonna get the major rebates, because there are things out there that we're changing. We are taking our old light fixtures that are, are energy hogs and putting in LEDs, high-level stuff that are 1/16 of what the energy output is. And then, of course, additional improvements that we're gonna do district-wide. Specific projects, of course, is that we're gonna air-condition the elementary schools, so that we make sure that, again, they're ready for, you know, May when it gets warm and September when it's still hot sometimes. Peter Hobart, we're gonna have a secured entrance there. Lennox, we're gonna have another security entrance there, classrooms and some restroom upgrades, because that, that building is aged and old and one is, one of the oldest buildings around, and of course, and then, of course, the district office, what we're gonna do to, how we're gonna relocate us and what we're gonna do with that. Timeline, again, what we're hoping for deferred maintenance is when the referendum passes in November, we're gonna be working very hard to start doing a lot of these projects in, in sequence in 2018, summer of 2018, and then the 2019, 2020, and then end up in 2021. So, we got, got our hands full, but we love it and we're excited about it. So, this is something that Sarah made sure to tell me, bring it forward. We gotta bring this message forward. So, there are avenues for Election Day on November 7th. I hope I don't mess up on this. The website, of course, is www.slpschools.org/referendum217. Emails, if you want to email referendum@slpschools.org. Facebook, and it is @StLouisParkPublicSchools. Twitter, @StLouisSLPPublicSchools and @283Soup, Superintendent O'Sai Twitter handle. Instagram, St Louis Park Public Schools. And of course, as the superintendent said, there's gonna be public meetings October 2nd, 25th, and there's gonna be a Twitter Town Hall on October 10th. You can look at your district website for more information. And then to learn more about the polling locations and voting hours, absent voting, contact the, the city of St. Louis Park at www.stlewispark.org or by phone at 952-924-2500. So, I think I got it all.
Any questions or comments? Joe?
So, I'll put Lisa on the spot here for, for a second here, but so when we're talking about air conditioning and we're talking about schools, during the school year, it's actually a very, like, as you were saying, it's a pretty small portion of the school year where air conditioning is potentially necessary. In some years, not even necessary, late May, early June, and here in September. Of course, we had some hot weather last week. I was hoping Lisa could speak to the use of the schools over the summer and what we can do with summer school and the advantage of having air conditioning at some of these facilities.
Sure. Right now, we have air conditioning in elementary schools at Aquila and at PSI. And so, what that does is it makes it that, really, those are the only two elementary schools available for programming. And at Aquila, we've been having 300-some students there, using pretty much the entire building. And at PSI, not quite that many, but using like a, a floor. What that does is it really puts all that pressure of having programs in those two schools, and Tom could talk about that from a custodial standpoint. So, if all four elementary schools were air-conditioned, we could rotate that around and be able to like have off-years for PSI and Aquila, so they can do big projects and things like that in the schools during those years. So, that'll be really helpful to have all four of our elementary schools air-conditioned. And then, of course, at the middle school, I believe only part of that is air-conditioned right now. We do run summer school, academic summer school there. Plus, there's lots of other programs that go on at the middle school, so it'd be nice if they had more space. And, and of course, the central is air-conditioned, but sometimes you wouldn't really know that. So, it gets pretty hot in there in the summer. So, does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Karen?
I just wanted to point out, got in the mail today, the Learning Design for the Future brochure, which highlights a lot of what Tom talked about and includes on the back of it the dates for these public meetings.
You know, one thing I want to point out, and I, I know I've said it before, but I've gotten this question. I think it's really important for the public to understand. When we're talking deferred maintenance, we have about a million square feet, give or take, in the district of our space that we own. And I know I've asked Sandy before, but we get comparatively very little to maintain our properties on an annual basis for capital improvements. And that money competes with books and other capital items. And so, to do some of the projects that we're talking about, the only way to do it is to reach out to the community and do a bond referendum. We cannot, yes, we have an annual budget, but a lot of that is our operating costs that people see that we love before. So, we get very little from the state relatively. And so, to do any project of any magnitude, we have to go out, and this is the way we have to do it. And that's why we defer maintenance, we defer maintenance, defer maintenance, and we go out for a bond referendum. I would say it's been probably every three, four years. So, that is just the way school districts have to operate under current law. And that's kind of what's behind all this. We list our projects for 10 years and that's, you know, these are already deferred maintenance projects. We're talking 10 years, you know? So, that's what's happening. That's why we're asking the public for this. And I guess confirm what I'm saying, but that's always been my understanding. And that's how we have to do these bigger capital items.
Yes, because costs are, you know, always going up and we just need to make sure we're prepared. So, yes.
Because I, I did have that question by a citizen wondering, well, why are we asking for this? Don't you, can't you handle that in your current budget? And the answer is no. We don't have that, so. Okay. All right. Thanks, Tom. Appreciate that. Okay. Our next item is the World's Best Workforce Report, and Superintendent O'Sai will be presenting on this.
All right. Good evening, Chair Yaros, members of the board. It is my pleasure to spend just a brief amount of time discussing the World's Best Workforce legislation. So, as you all are aware, in 2013, there was legislative action taken around the World's Best Workforce statute 120B.11, which required all school districts to develop an annual report summary for each school year. And what my purpose tonight is just to really share a little bit of information connected to that report. And what you'll know is that much of the data that you'll see this evening is a repeat of data that you saw at our last board meeting on September 11th, when our Director of Assessment, Research and Evaluation shared our Fall Assessment Data Report, which was really encompassed all of our data. This is more of a snapshot of particular data points that are connected to our World's Best Workforce Plan. So, for the purpose of this presentation, I have three outcomes for you that you'll understand the goals and metrics used to measure progress as it relates to the World's Best Workforce, that you'll understand our performance on those target areas, and that I'm talking just a little bit about mechanisms for continuous improvement. It's, it's critical that you know and that our community knows that we have very clear goals and that we have a plan to get there, particularly as it relates to the strategies in our strategic plan and our deliverables. Also, as it relates to the site continuous improvement work that occurs at all of our schools. Every single one of our schools develops a site improvement plan in which they take the data from the students that are at their school and design plans to help move those students forward. And, you know, also, it's important to note that you'll see some evidence here that our, our, our work is making a difference. And I'll talk about that. And it's important to note that there are still gaps that are predictable by race. This slide really just highlights our both state and local goals. So, our mission objectives, there are our local goals, and then the state goals around the World's Best Workforce are highlighted as well. Those goals include students being ready for kindergarten, so we'll show some metrics that connect to that. Students reading well by grade three, graduation, college and career readiness, and we're making progress towards closing the achievement gaps. It's also important to note here that this legislation was designed because of the fact that the state of Minnesota felt that in order for us to continue to be competitive in the future, that we had to do something to improve the learning outcomes of all of our students. As you know, in the state of Minnesota, our population is aging. 70% of the jobs that will, you know, in 2018 will require more than a high school diploma. And currently, based on data from the Minnesota Department of Education, we currently do not have enough students graduating with the, with the basic skills necessary to fill many of the jobs that are available in the state. Another critical component, particularly as it relates to the disproportionate number of students of color who are not meeting standards, is that the, the fastest-growing population in this state is our students of color, and which really highlights the, the critical nature by Minnesota Department of Education of making sure that we're ensuring that all students are achieving at high levels. The Minnesota Department of Education also acknowledges that the state of Minnesota still continues to have one of the most significant achievement gaps in the country, particularly between black and white students. So, I, I talked a little bit as it relates to having very, having a very clear plan and clear goals. And as part of our strategic plan and our deliverables, we have strategies. And you heard Tom Bravo talk a little bit about some of the work connected to our strategy for facilities. But we also have a strategy around teaching and learning, systems and structures, community collaboration. And one of the things, whenever I'm talking about our strategic plan or our work in this area, it's important to know that these strategies in many ways are interconnected and that they all work together in order to move the work of our strategic plan forward. For example, having facilities that are consistent with the needs of our learners allows us to have our teaching and learning strategy implemented at a high level and also our community collaboration strategy. So, all of these strategies work together to meet the needs of our strategic plan. So, really, as, as we think about the work that we're doing, we're, we're really working to ensure that all students meet the basic standards as it relates to what they're tested on in our state assessments, particularly the MCA. We work extremely hard to grow students who, you know, may not come to us with some of the requisite skills or may not be ready, you know, kindergarten-ready or reading well by grade three, really utilizing strategies and intervention to grow them so that we can, we can close gaps. As you heard me reference before, you know, we're in a state that currently has one of the largest gaps. So, we really work to grow students at an accelerated pace, so that we can close some of the exact, the gaps that exist. And, you know, feel free to stop me at any point. I'm kind of rushing through this, because in many ways, the data that I'll be sharing and some of these concepts are connected to information you heard at our last meeting. So, particularly as it relates to kindergarten readiness, this is a, a chart of the cohort, cohort from 2016. So, what you'll see is their test data in the fall of 16, the winter of 17, and the spring of 17. And what this chart really just shows is that once we get students here, particularly in kindergarten, we're able to grow them. So, we had a goal under this area. Our goal was to increase the percentage of students on track from fall to spring by 2%. We started out with 67.9% of our students on track, and we were working to improve them to, to close to 70%. And what you'll notice is that by the spring of, of, of that year, of last year, we had almost 89% of our students on, on track as it relates to being kindergarten-ready, related to the early reading assessment results, which is data that I know you all are familiar with, as you've seen this previously. This is data that shows three different cohorts, and the purpose of me sharing this with you is just to let you know that we, each year, our students come to us at different, with different levels of readiness. And this, these data points are connected to the, the fast, early reading assessment, which was also the data that I showed on the last slide. There is another goal connected to the World's Best Workforce, which indicates that we want all students reading well by grade three. You'll notice there that the, the black line indicates all students, it shows all students. And you'll see, you know, over the last three years, the, the progress, or really particularly at third grade, over the last three years, it's been pretty flat. We set a goal last year of to have, to increase in this area the number of proficient students from 65 to 67% as measured by the MCA III reading test. And based on the data from our MCA exam, we did not meet that goal. We ended up having 64% of our students proficient at the end of last year. So, we are continuing to look at that and determining what additional strategies or interventions are necessary in order to continue to move that, to move the needle there. College and career readiness or graduation. Graduation is an area that St. Louis Park, oh, go ahead, Karen, I'm sorry. Yep.
Sorry, Esther. Just going back the one slide on the MCA testing. Do we know, do we have a significant number of kids opting out for those third-grade tests, which then would skew the data?
You know, I can't, and I don't know off the top of my head what the exact number is. I believe we see more opt-out, particularly at the high school, levels so 10th grade reading, 11th grade math. We, we haven't seen in the past as many students at third grade, but I don't have the exact number off the top of my head.
And this third grade is the last third grade before we started the change?
That, that is my understanding as well. So, the, the students that will be testing this year in third grade will, are the students that starting under the, the, the new K redesign. So, those students will be testing this year for the third-grade reading test. Any other questions connected to third grade reading? Okay. As it relates to graduation, so there's another, if you remember those, those World's Best Workforce goals, there's a, there's a goal around college and career readiness through graduation or by graduation. And what you see, our goal, as it related to graduation, was that we would increase the graduation rate by 1% from 92.7 to 93.7% from 16, from, excuse, excuse me, 2015 to 2016 for all students. The four-year graduation rate at the end of 2016 ended up being 92.2%. And if, one of the things that I've recognized, particularly here, coming to St. Louis Park, is that the graduation rate here is extremely high as it relates to other, compared to other school districts around the state. As I was looking at the graduation rate and looking at it broken down by student group, I noticed that, you know, the state is asking us to move to, you know, a, a measurement. And I know Ken, last meeting, you really talked about traditionally, we've compared it, you know, based on race, where we want students to get to, but really getting to that number, that 90% goal. And what you'll notice is that many of our student groups already meet the state expectation of 90% graduation rate or higher. And the state is also suggesting that no group be under 85%. And based on what I'm seeing from the data that I was able to gather from the, the Minnesota Department of Education, that we're making great progress there, and we have to, you know, focus in a little bit, focus in more on our Hispanic community and particularly our students here to determine what is needed to support our students to continue to raise the graduation rates there as well. But overall, from a graduation rate standpoint, we, we've made some significant progress, and I'm, I'm confident that we'll be able to continue to make progress in this area. There was, um, this is just representing that information a little bit differently. You, you may be wondering, so what is this unknown category here? What does that mean? What is that about? You see the four different categories, graduated, continuing, dropped out and unknown. And the way that the state calculates unknown data, it reflects students that attend school their ninth, 10th grade year, but do not come back for their 11th or 12th grade year, and the state doesn't have any record or indication of, of where they're at. The distinction there between, so there's a distinction between the unknown and dropping out, and then dropping out, a student would start their 12th grade year based on how MDE calculates that, that information. But what I would like to highlight specifically for the purpose of this slide is just to talk a little bit about how we measure college and career readiness. For example, through the measurement of the ACT test. And based on the ACT goal that we set last year, we set a goal to increase college and careers-ready students from 33 to 35% as measured by the ACT. And really, what we're looking at is students that score 21 or higher on the ACT composite. And based on the data from last year, 37. And based on the data from last year, 37% of our students scored 21 or higher on the, on the ACT plus writing exam, which allowed us to meet the goal in that category. This just shows a, an overview of the number of students who graduate from St. Louis Park Public Schools and enroll in a higher edu, or institution of higher education. The way that the state calculates it is that they base the percentage on students enrolled within 16 months of, of graduating high school. So you'll see there that 85% of the students who graduate from St. Louis Park enroll in the institution of higher education within 16 months of graduating high school, compared to 74% at the state. So as I begin to wrap up, I really want to talk about, so what is, what is my role here in St. Louis Park as the superintendent of schools? And I, I really see three key areas of leadership that is required to help us close the gap in some of these areas. What you'll notice with all three of these areas is that they're interconnected. You know, I highlight strategic leadership, and what I, what I've done so far and what I'll continue to do is have a focus on the mission and strategic plan to ensure that there's alignment in everything we do, really get to the core of the understanding of why. You know, oftentimes, you know, if you come to work every single day and you don't truly understand what the purpose of what you're doing and why you're doing it, it, it could, it could be disconnected and lead you to do things that aren't necessarily helping us accomplish our goal. So what I continually try to focus on is the why. The why of public education first and foremost, but the why of what we do here in St. Louis Park Public Schools. Most importantly, as the leader of this organization, it's critical for me to create coherence. And, and that's around focusing our direction. So you, you heard me talk a little bit about strategic leadership, cultivating collaborative cultures, securing accountability, and deepening learning. And that deepening learning piece really connects to capacity building. So one of the things that I know to be true as it relates to education is that everyone in this organization must have the knowledge, skill, and will to close those gaps that we just talked about, and it's my responsibility to create communities or, communities or collaborative communities and cultures to allow that type of knowledge, skill, and will to occur. So as we, excuse me, as I close, I just want to come back to the key messages that I started off with, and that's that I believe we have some very clear goals here in St. Louis Park. I'm confident in the plan that we have to get there, connected to our strategic plan and priority work. I, I, I'm confident, and I know we have evidence that our work is making a difference, and I believe that we're on the right track to close those gaps that are still predictable. Any questions?
Great. Okay, this is, this is a great report, and as I said last week, or a couple of weeks ago, this, this one's new. I like this, what it's, the picture, but again, I don't like what it's totally saying to me. But in that picture, there, there still are a percentage of the students that we're not able to count, to reach, correct? Because they drop out or they don't attend college in the, in the future. So, and, and why I mean that we're not able to reach them is I don't believe that we have the tools for them to succeed in this building completely. And I don't mean scholastically, I mean, I mean, we're not giving them the infrastructure for them to succeed. Like, maybe it's not in the books that they can learn the best, maybe it's trade or a hands-on type of activities that we, hopefully, we can expand what we currently have into reaching more of that 15% that we're missing on. So it's just a statement, and I continue to say it.
Who else? Bruce?
I want to build on that just a little bit, because the, as an IB school district, and we're not totally IB, we're missing two grades in the high school, but I want to, I, I've been pushing on that for a while. I think that's important. But to support Ken's position, there's also an IB, it's a commercial or a trade-type approach to international baccalaureate, that I think is really important, that we should take a look at. There are a number of schools in the area that do it. I think it would support the kids who get IB all through the elementaries and all through the middle school, then they can make some choices, whether they stay with the IB on a college track, or they do IB on a career track. And then I, I just think that's really important, and at our high school, and, and I have pushed our principal on it just a little bit, violating a little bit of command, but I just think it's really important that we work with our kids and we pick up that 15%.
And Bruce, I think you're referring directly to the Project Lead the Way component. There's a relationship between Project Lead the Way, which is a lot, lot of engineering, more, more hands-on techn, technological education opportunities, and they have a relationship with the IB where there is a certification that students can get some post-secondary credit connected to.
Karen?
One thing that we worked on really hard when we created the strategic plan, and Bruce and I were on the core team, was to make sure that we had a commitment to racial equity embedded through all four of our pillars, and including the board level. So we've all had some training in racial equity, because I think we need to model for our teachers and our community that we're not asking you to do this alone. It is really hard work, but it is really important work, and I think it's vital that the way we're going to close the gap is to take a hard look at our discipline policy and how we're doing referrals with that, because we need kids in the class to learn. And the, the other side of it is, we have a cohort of kids who went through the Civil Rights Research Experience Project, and they're ready to advocate, to call out embedded racism in our institution. And we want to make sure that it's safe for them to do that, because we really need to look at strategy one, teaching and learning related to systems and structure, strategy two. As you said earlier, it's all interconnected, but I think the foundational piece is our commitment to racial equity. And I know you've had experience doing that in your previous work, Aston.
Well, I, I want to first start off by thanking each of you for your courageous leadership in setting the path for us as an organization to really engage, sustain, and deepen conversations about race. Because that, that, the way that we're currently doing it here in St. Louis Park doesn't happen everywhere, and it, and it first starts with the commitment of the school board, so thank you all for setting, setting the path. And absolutely, Karen, I mean, as, as we look at our data, and as we, as we see which students are meeting our highest expectations and those that aren't, it's very predictable by race, so much so that even in our strategic plan and in our mission, we talk about this, this, this notion or concept of racially unpredictable results, right? And I'm a firm believer that you can't solve matters of racial inequity without talking about race. So the, the first thing that we've, what we've been working on for the last couple of years here is really around a protocol to engage in, in these conversations. And as we're engaging in these conversations, you know, it becomes, it becomes challenging, and sometimes it becomes uncomfortable, and we have to really work with each other and, you know, work on strategies to sustain the conversations so that we can ultimately go deeper, to really get at the root of what is causing these, you know, achievement inequities, so that we can remove whatever barriers are in place and, and start moving forward and doing what's in best interest of our students, but most importantly, bringing to life the words on, on our strategic plan mission around all learners or each learner. So I, I commend you all for the path that you've, you've set us out on, and I'm confident as we continue to go down this path, that we'll, we'll see the needle moving in the right direction towards all children achieving at high levels.
All right. Well, thank you. Appreciate that report. Nicely done. Our next item will be the preliminary levy update. Sandy Celine, Director of Business Services, will present.
This is something that we have to do every year. By September 30th, we have to certify our preliminary levy, which, what I'm going to be showing you tonight is a comparison between our prior year's payable 2017 levy to our current year's payable 2018 levy. And this is, at this point in time, as of September 21st, our levy certification from Minnesota Department of Education, and there may be adjustments from the Minnesota Department of Education that still may exist. I don't anticipate that there's going to be anything of magnitude, but this is a preliminary levy that you'll be approving tonight, and you'll have the opportunity to finalize a levy come December and, and, and approve a final levy at that point in time. So I'm going to go through some of the highlights as far as some of the changes that occurred from the prior year. Looking at the operating referendum, what I always tell everybody is I'm very conservative in what I put in for pupil units and, and, because this is something that you do two years in advance. So if you don't, if you put it higher than what you need to, it can come back the other way, where we're going to have a negative adjustment. And so what I always do is try to be conservative with that piece, and we always have a prior year adjustment in that $200,000, $300,000 range. It was just last year, there was a reduction of $180,000, which increases that, increased to almost $500,000. The current year, there, we did bring the enrollment up to a higher level, to bring it to more of a realistic level at this point in time, so, because we know. So you're going to see a, a little bit of an increase in our operating referendum for the current year as well. So that makes up about $800,000, five, yeah, 800, close to $800,000 of an increase. We did have a increase in our net tax capacity, which does affect our capital projects referendum, which is our, our tech levy. So you will see an increase there as well as of $136,000. You're going to see, I'm going to go through, like I said, the highlights, you're going to see a little bit of give and take throughout the levies, line items, but the long-term facility levy, which is what we have for, for our levy for aid, our deferred maintenance items in our tenure plan.
Sandy, sorry, pause it, just to back up, I'm thinking about that capital project referendum. We're having an increased revenue there, probably because real estate values are going up, and that tech levy is based on the values of the real estate, right?
That's correct.
So when you were figuring out before, as compared, okay, younger shot, values went up, we're getting more revenue, right?
Well, actually, the state calculates that, and they calculate the levy based on what net, net tax capacity they have at that point in time.
Yeah, that's true. Okay. But that's, those are dollars coming in.
For that particular purpose.
Got it. Bruce?
Sandy, I, you mentioned the $800,000. I'm sorry, I can't follow that.
If you look at the operating referendum and the prior year operating adjustment, there's that increase or decrease, yeah. I mean, a big part of that had to do with the referendum and adjusting those pupil units, as well as we do get a slight increase for, a percentage of increase for our operating referendum each year that fluctuates every year.
Oh, it's the combo, the 493 and the 285, right? Not just, okay.
And like I was saying, the long-term facility levy is the other one that increased by $534,000, and this is based on the tenure plan that Tom Bravo mentioned previously. There was a legislative change that occurred that increased that levy this current year. But I just want to add that does not meet our deferred maintenance that we have every year still. We did have tax increment financing, which is basically a city, it's really kind of nothing that really is related to us, but it's a, we're a mechanism in which the city gives us money one year, and then it, it is given back to the taxpayers another year. So that's kind of, it's a wash in a matter of a few years, but we kind of hold that ability to be able to have that tax increment financing as a mechanism on our, our taxes for the taxpayers. There's the abatement adjustments, there's current year abatement adjustments, as well as advanced abatement adjustments. And, and this is really, like I said, the levy process happens two years prior, so there's always going to be abatements after the fact and, and possibly increases in taxes. So there's, this is a way for, for that process to, to come to a realization as soon as possible. So when you look at all of those adjustments before you, there's a 1.974 increase in the general fund overall levy from 2017 to 2018. And looking at community ed and debt service, they pretty much were comparable to what they were in the prior years. There was some slight adjustments, but all in all, those funds, as well as the other funds for our post-employment bonds, were pretty much stable from the prior year. So all in all, the grand total is the 1.972 increase from the prior year, which is a 7.54% increase. And as I said, I don't expect any more adjustments from the state, but they do have the ability to make adjustments if there's calculations on their part that need to be made. But we can, we will be bringing this to the board come December to have a final levy approval.
Any questions to Sandy? All right. Thanks. And that'll come up later on the agenda for a vote, and then we will, as Sandy said, see to get in December after the truth of taxation hearing. Okay. All right. Next item is the policy development, first reading on policies, 401, equal employment opportunity, 402, disability nondiscrimination, 413, harassment and violence, and 400, policy 419, tobacco-free environment. I think we had one of those policies had some recommended changes. Which one? Oh, two of them, was it? Are there any other comments? Or Sandy, do you want to talk about these first reading?
Yes, thank you. The policies brought before you are on the Minnesota School Board's recommended annual approval, mandated approval.
Oh, these are, these are annual mandated?
These, the ones that we've been bringing forth since the beginning of the year are on the MSBA mandated approval list. Few of them are a little behind in date review, so that's why we're trying to lump them, giving you a little bit of reading all at once. The one that's coming to you for the most changes, I believe, is 413, harassment and violence, I believe. One second. Nope, I'm, I'm ahead of myself. That's the ones coming for second approval, second reading, sorry. The ones coming before you now are leading your pool for review. The most current one, 413 harassment, was reviewed last year, that had major changes last year. Since last year, there's no new changes, is where I was going. And then tobacco-free environment was last reviewed in 20, in 2014, and the other two were in 2012. So no recommended changes, just affirmation that the board has looked at them and reviewed them, and I will change the review date.
Okay. First reading, any other comments? All right, that'll come on next meeting for second reading. Next is our second reading then for policy 514, bullying prohibition, and 526, hazing prohibition. Second reading, we saw that first time last meeting. Any other comments? On those? Cindy?
There were a few minor grammatical changes, commas, et cetera, that I repaired. And then just to note that the one with the most changes is 526, hazing. These are all recommended by MSBA, vetted by Knutson &amp; Flynn, to reflect all the changes in the legislative language.
Yep, and those are redlined on our...
That's correct.
Yep. Any comments on those, second reading? All right, that'll come up on our action agenda. Next item is to set our school board listening session dates. Cindy, you have got it several times for us and locations, I believe, right? There we go.
Yes.
October 11.
Yeah, three dates with different venues, whatever date is the will of the board. I'll have all three of these hold, on hold with all of these sites. I'll just let the facility schedule know what works best for two or three of you folks.
Yep, we can't have a quorum. And I know we tried to... And I know we tried to, we looked at the calendar and there's difficulties with every date, but go ahead.
The Allies of St. Louis Park is holding a community conversation on transgender issues on Monday, the 16th, at the St. Louis Park Public Library.
And so you're suggesting we do either the 11th or the 24th? Now, the 24th is getting kind of late, and the question is, you know, October 11th, that would give enough time. That's why we wanted to bring it up here, so that's just, you know, it's a few weeks. I guess I would prefer the, the 11th over the 24th, probably, given the timing of the election.
The 11th does have room at Lenox, if that's your purview. We haven't been there in a while for a session.
Oh, is that, so you're saying we could have it either at Lenox or one of the media centers? So we choose the place as well, is what you're saying?
That's correct.
Got it. Do I hear any objection to the 11th? We'll be able to get two or three of us there. We can figure out who that's going to be at a different time, I guess, when... But let's, like to get the date set up on the web, so why don't we tentatively say the 11th? It's a Monday night. October 11th. Oh, excuse...
I tried to stay away from Wednesdays in looking for opportunities, but we have concerts and a lot of activities and et cetera, so I apologize, but that's the best we could come up with for open dates.
Yep. That's, it's always tough and hopefully... So why don't we do that? Why don't we set it on the 11th? And then we can figure out when we have a full board, who's, what, two or three?
Which location would you like?
Well, Karen has said that recently we had been at Lenox, actually, for, was it last spring? So...
I was just thinking, if you wanted your seniors to have an opportunity, that might be a good place for them. But whatever he decides, fine.
Is there preference? Why don't we just... All right, yeah. It's centrally located, maybe it's here, so let's just do Lenox. That's fine. So October 11th, 6:30 to 8:00. And I'm sure we'll get ample attendance, but if not, we'll have our policy. If no one shows in the first 30 minutes, then the board members there are free to leave at that point.
That's correct. I'll make sure this gets on the website tomorrow.
All right, that's great. And then maybe we can send mail and we'll figure out who's available that night, so... All right?
Thank you.
That brings us on to our consent agenda. It's recommended that we approve this evening's consent agenda. Is there a motion? It's moved by Ken. Any sec, I would entertain a second of Ken's motion on approving the consent agenda. All right, Bruce? Not seeing any retirements yet, kind of early in the year. People are still thinking about it. Tammy, don't be smiling. Nothing in the works. No. All right, so we have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed. That passes 5-0. Our next item is on our action agenda, approval of the preliminary levy. It is recommended that the school board approve the 2017, 2018 preliminary levy as presented. Is there a motion? Moved by Karen, seconded by Joe. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed. That passes 5-0. We'll see that again in December for our final levy. Next item is the approval of second reading of policies 514 bullying prohibition and 526 hazing prohibition. It's recommended that the school board approve the second reading of those aforementioned policies as presented. Moved by Bruce. Seconded by Ken. Any further comment? All those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed. That passes 5-0. And we are on to communications and transmittals. Karen?
Saturday was the Griac cross-country race. It's one of the biggest, best cross-country events, and our kids did really, really well. But it was also an example of Children's First Asset Number 26 caring because there's a limitation of the number of kids who can participate, but a big majority of the team went with their competitors on the bus to cheer them on in that hot, 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 sticky weather. We had three runners on the podium and our girls had a high finish as well. So way to go, a cross-country team.
Well, since you brought it up, we have to add that the illustrious Mr. Griac was a coach here at St. Louis Park High School, plucked away by the University of Minnesota for a successful career coaching college track. So anyhow, that goes without saying. Bruce? Oh, and his kids graduated from St. Louis Park High School.
At the homecoming game, which I will not discuss the score, but the football team is now 2-2. And the, they're doing fine. But one of the things I always love about homecoming, the, when the, when the kids go out, the homecoming kings and queens and those kinds of people get out on the field. Something I was not aware of, Karen and I were sitting close, and she informed me that, and I hadn't realized this, that we moved the dance back into the gym this year and that the student council did that. And so, so more kids could go, so it was more affordable. I just thought that was a great move on the student council's part. And I want to send out kudos to the student council, to their president and others who influenced that, because I just think it's a great move. It was definitely in line with our equity and with all the things that we're trying to do. So again, I hadn't heard of it before, and thank you, Karen, for telling me about it. And I just, it's just a great move and it supports our kids.
And just as a follow-up to that, I think we had sold, I think they sold over 750 tickets. So it was very well attended and the cost went, and I'm going to not get it quite right, but 25 or 30 bucks down to about eight or 10 bucks, yeah. So it was much more affordable and I think the turnout reflected it, so...
And one of the seniors, who is a DJ at Paisley Park, did the tunes for the kids for his classmates.
Neat. Ken?
I really don't have anything other than piggyback onto, sorry, Bruce's message on the football games. They, they are, we are doing better. We've won two games better than last year. And the amount of students that were in the stands and parents that are in the stands was phenomenal on that homecoming game. So continue to go watch them. They will be there in park for the next two weeks. And then we're away games for the last two weeks. So use your tickets.
Season goes quickly. All right. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by Joe. Seconded by Bruce. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, that passes 5-0. We are adjourned.